Good evening, everyone. Welcome to February 8th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Kincaid will lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the recovery for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Okay, we'll move on to the roll call members. Madam Griffin, you call the roll, please.
Sure. Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
Thank you. John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat.
Here.
Sierra Messenger.
Here.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, for those watching at home, Councilman Robertson is joining us virtually by phone conference. So with that, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from our previous meeting. Are there any changes or edits to those minutes? Would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, minutes are approved. All right, on to old business. I don't have anything on my agenda. Is there anything from the council?
No, sir.
Okay, new business then. First item up is Resolution 2021-01. Council to consider an amendment to the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan for the Lebanon Business Park Mobility Plan. We have Plan Director Ben Bottrager to present this.
I will give this just a very brief overview. Brandon Shregg is here to give us a little bit more of a presentation on the process we went through and some of the outcomes. And talking about some of the amenities and connectivity that's missing from our business park that, as it had developed over time, noticed that we're severely lacking with pedestrian and bicycle connectivity, both within the business park and also connectivity back to the rest of the community. So we went through a planning effort to identify those challenges and then also figure out what some of those solutions might look like in terms of planning for and implementing that type of infrastructure in the future. This is a two-step process. The Plan Commission does review comp plan amendments. So this does come to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. And then the amendment is adopted by resolution by the council. And at that point, if it's once adopted, then we'll post it to our comp plan website. But with that, I'll just turn it over to Brandon. And as far as I know, we're not going to do anything major by unplugging this computer here. Okay, we're good. Okay. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't disconnecting somebody that was participating via meeting, so.
Thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Brandon Shregg. I'm with Kimberly Horn. And happy to talk with you about kind of what we did in the Lebanon Business Park Trail Planning Mobility Exercise and Planning Study that we prepared. I have a short presentation here and then happy to answer any questions you may have. So the process kind of began back in May 2020. And we put together, you know, the base maps and everything that we need to do this. Did a lot of outreach with different folks in the city administration. And then kind of had several meetings where we sat down and just kind of wanted to talk about planned goals, what could happen, what do we want to see happen in the business park. We prepared some recommendations, kind of bounced some ideas around, had a public survey, a couple of different public surveys as a matter of fact, and go through some of the other outreach efforts that we did as well here shortly. We did present at the Redevelopment Commission meeting, I believe that was, yeah, in October. And then, as Ben mentioned, we were before your Plan Commission last couple of weeks ago and had a favorable recommendation to pass this along to yourselves. So a couple of first things that we always like to start with, you know, what are the boundaries, what are we looking at, who's in the business park, talk about, you know, what roads, major connectivity options do we have, what kind of obstacles are there, what kind of planning studies have been done in the past as well to kind of address some of this. So took a good look at the business park users, the tenants and the owners. There we go. And then, yes, as I mentioned, the plans, we looked at your Bicycle Pedestrian Master Plan that was prepared in 2015, your Thoroughfare Plan, just to kind of get a sense of what the roads would be doing, the streets and the volume of traffic would be there in the future. We looked at your Comprehensive Plan to see what kind of goals you had for this area as well. Engagement outreach kind of processes that we went through. So we did an online survey through Duke Realty, as a matter of fact, that the leasing agent helped us out, sent out this online survey that we had prepared to just kind of engage the business park owners and tenants. We had good conversations with Duke Realty themselves. We had a virtual meeting with some of the business park owners and tenants. We did some city, some online polling via the city newsletter as well. Joe sent out some really nice, quick, easy questions for, you know, some quick consumption there. I think we had about 100 folks take that. On the other virtual meetings that we had, we had one with the Boone County Economic Development folks. And as you can see here on the screen, they then kind of blasted this out via their newsletter as well. And then there was a link to the online survey that they could take as well. So as I mentioned earlier, we did, we had several city administration meetings. And then, as I also mentioned, we met with the Redevelopment Commission in October. So some of the planned recommendations, you know, I'll give you a really brief overview of what we're looking at here. Essentially, Enterprise Boulevard, we looked at that as a spine to the network. And then your additional streets, kind of Mountain Zion, kind of feeding into the spine network that is Enterprise Boulevard. Also thinking about how do we connect the city proper across 65 into the business park. So took a good look at that with State Route 39 Bridge, looked at the 32 Bridge as well and that interchange, and how do we weave pedestrians and bicyclists safely through that area. Also thinking in the future, going north along Sanitary Ditch up to the Big Four Trail today. So, you know, just want to make sure we have that connectivity planned for in the future. As I mentioned, Enterprise Boulevard was really the spine of the network. So we really took a hard look at what are the conditions, the various conditions that we have out there today. For example, do we need to add a lot of grade to make that a safe and traversable trail system? Or do we need to cut, you know, those sort of things? What do we do with drainage if that were to be the case? So we kind of see some sections here, how we conceptually looked at that. Also, one of the things that we heard from the business owners in our engagement was, you know, it sure would be nice to have a kind of a place in the business park to have, you know, to congregate and to, you know, enjoy a nice day, if you will. So what we're looking at here is we have two different concepts. A is the existing drainage facility at Mountain Zion and Enterprise. So looking at, you know, maybe adding a few amenities to that, maybe there's a trailhead, some bike parking, maybe there's a boardwalk that goes across the existing pond, and maybe a pavilion as well to get out of the sun on hot days. Option B shows taking a vacant parcel in the business park and kind of dressing that up, adding in maybe public restroom facilities, again, a trailhead, bike parking, maybe there's a playground or a splash pad, maybe there's a large lawn area for folks to hang out on or for some physical activity out there as well. Maybe there's even opportunity for wayfinding and public art, too. So we really looked at a couple of different amenity options for the plan. These were also sent out to be voted on by the public. Put together some renderings of what that trailhead might look like, just to get everybody a sense of how that would work, and then how the signage, your existing City of Lebanon Trail signage would work into that, too. Talking about the wayfinding and the signage, we also put together design standards that incorporate that signage, but then also look at, you know, what does the landscape want to be in these corridors? What kind of safety measures do we want to have as far as pedestrian crossings? So much like on Main Street, some of the stop or the trail crossing conditions that we installed there, we put those in the design guidelines for this plan as well. Kind of wrapping up here, we then take that work, that network we talked about earlier with Enterprise being the spine and then some of the other streets kind of feeding into that, and just looked at some logical phasing options and opportunities. So we put this together just so, A, you know, we have a sense of how the project could be phased out over time, as it is meant to be, you know, a phased plan for implementation. But then what are some logistical concerns that we might have, which phases go best together, which one might be first, that sort of thing. In doing so, we came up with a pilot project that could happen. So this would be kind of from the Strip Retail Center, I believe it's called Lebanon Business Plaza, that you can access off Garofalo Boulevard, kind of up by your hospitality note. You know, how could that trail system work into and then feed into the business park and then ultimately land at one, either A or B, of the amenity areas we just looked at in detail? So a couple of different options on how that might look and how that would go forward as a pilot project to kind of show the rest of the business park, you know, what are some of the look and the feel and the design standards and the connectivity options that could be happening. We put together some order of magnitude cost estimates as well, just to kind of have an understanding of, you know, is phase A or option B or, you know, those sort of things? What kind of general costs could those be? And then, you know, that helps out obviously with budgeting and planning over the years. So with that, as a pretty brief run-through, but just, yeah, if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Any questions from council?
Yes. Who is the target audience? I mean, I cycle on the trail, I walk the trails, and, I mean, who's going to use a trail without the business park?
Yeah, good, really good question. So in our outreach that we had, you know, we talked to some owners and some tenants that, you know, folks on their lunch break were kind of doing a laps in their parking lot, for example. So that could be, you know, obviously you have a built-in audience there for those users. Also, you know, that's why we also looked at connectivity back to the city and to the Big Four Trail and over the 39 Bridge. So it could be a citywide amenity, you know, being as the Big Four Trail is a regional amenity as well, going out into the county, folks could come in from that and take a spin through the business park as well and add to those mileage.
And also it could serve if people wanted to ride their bike to the business park, because right now that's, let's say, more of a challenging condition for them to do that at the moment. It would promote some of the, you know, biking to work, things like that, if that was desirable, which again, just connectivity and activity is something that we're seeing an increase in. And obviously, it's not every day you would probably do that with rain conditions, things like that, but it just could be another option for people that wanted to. Because we do hear feedback from the business park that sometimes the conditions aren't conducive to, you know, not everybody has access to transportation sometimes, and that can be a challenge for the employers of, you know, if their car breaks down, you know, they can't get to work, right? So it could be alternative option for them as well.
I have a question. When you have all the options put together, say like the final A through I, or something like that, what's like the total length of this? Or I'm trying to get a dimension. It's one thing to look at a bird's eye view, but I, what's the length here?
Sure. So, for example, the Enterprise Boulevard spine that we have there is about two and a half miles. So adding up some of the other parts and pieces, you quickly get to seven or eight miles pretty quickly.
Okay. Which is why we are talking about kind of if we want to move forward on this, and there's no, obviously no funding request tonight, this is just kind of a long-term, incorporated into our kind of our planning documents, right? That's why we probably consider a phased option, right? We're not going to go out there tomorrow and build all this stuff. It's definitely a long-term, you know, how do we kind of put the genie back in the bottle, so to speak? We obviously could have been incorporating this as we were building out the business park, but obviously that was not as high of priority 25 years ago when we started it, right? So this is just trying to go back and, you know, a condition to rectify if we wanted to in the future.
So are the business owners out there willing to pay for part of this?
Well, now that-
The amenity for their employees?
Well, now that we have the number, we can at least ask, know how much to ask for if they want to. Potentially. It varies between the businesses, right? Every, you know, different businesses put different priorities on some of this stuff. So that's, it's, we at least have something to talk about now.
Now, have you guys been in communication with the state as far as to develop safely crossing the interstates? Because it's very dangerous over there. And I do see that there is a need for proper paths for people to walk and bike into the business park, because I drive that every day on my way to work, and I see people every single day walking alongside that road. And it appears very dangerous to me. They're right, I mean, they're right on those bridges, right close to you. Semis are going by, it's dangerous. I just don't know if, you know, how much the state's going to want to put in-
Yeah, and to bring to this point, I mean, it's easier for us to go to the state when we've kind of got this plan saying, hey, here's what we theoretically would want to do versus trying to say, hey, we want to prove the pedestrian connectivity to our business park. The state's like, okay, well, what's your plan, right? So this allows us to kind of have that conversation down the road if we ever choose to do that.
Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brandon? Okay.
This might be maybe a question for maybe Ben or somebody else might know. As far as the trails, is it going to be the park responsibility to take care of those as well? Will that be added into there? Or like, you know, are they going to be plowed? Are they going to be taken care of if limbs fall? Or has that been a discussion?
Haven't thought that far into the future yet in terms of operation and maintenance side, so I don't know that I have a good answer to the question right now. It could be decades before we figure out how even fund the first phase of this project. So when we figure that out, we'll figure those components out, too. It's certainly something where we'd want it to be properly maintained so it's safe for people to use or even during bad weather, so.
Any other questions for Ben or for Brandon?
Well, I just, just so we're clear, we're going to be asked to vote on Resolution 2021-01. That's not spending any money or committing to anything. We're just basically saying it's a good idea, here's our plan going forward, I think.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
We're adopting a planning document that basically incorporates into the comp plan, so it's just a planning guide that we use as we make decisions. So that's all it is.
Very similar to our Bike Pedestrian Master Plan from 2015, right? And even this, it's a living document, too, right? I mean, it's not like this is set in stone, we have to build it, right? We made adjustments and changes to our 2015 pedestrian master, or bicycle pedestrian master plan as well over the years. So it's not, it's just kind of a, here's our initial thoughts on this, and then, you know, funding and construction are definitely topics down the road, not today.
Yep. Okay.
Got it.
And so it's subject to change. I mean, obviously, I think everyone's input should be taken consideration before everything's finalized as far as that goes.
Well, yeah, and again, this is our, as things stand today, this is kind of our, this is kind of the idea we came up with, and so we can incorporate that into our, just going forward. Now granted, our business park is not mostly built out, right? So it's not like we can say, okay, it's part of this business, you need to build this now. So we'd have to retroactively go in and do this. But again, there aren't any, there's no funding plans for today. It's just kind of incorporating our kind of our long-term thinking for our community, that's all.
Yeah. 25 years, 25 years out.
Probably, yeah. Rob, let's have you read the resolution then, and we'll see if there's a public comment after that.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is Resolution 2021-01, where it amends the City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan for the Lebanon Business Park Mobility Plan. This council has the duty and authority to review, amend, and approve amendments to the City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan, adopted and certified by the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission. As Mr. Bottrager indicated, the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held a public hearing on January 26, 2021 for docket number 21-7, the Lebanon Business Park Mobility Plan as required by Indiana Code. The Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission found that the Lebanon Business Park Mobility Plan to be in accordance with the promotion of the public health, safety, morals, convenience, order, and/or general welfare for the sake of efficiency and economy in the process of development of the community, and is certified to this council with its adoption by a vote of nine to zero in favor. This council hereby adopts the amendments to the City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan as set forth in Exhibit A. The Department of Planning and Zoning is ordered to amend the Comprehensive Plan to conform to these amendments. And all acts done to create and implement this amendment to the Comprehensive Plan are hereby ratified.
Thank you, Rob. Any further questions after reading the resolution?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning this topic? Okay. Thank you. This time then, I would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2021-01.
I move we approve Resolution 2021-01.
We have a motion to approve and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Was that a delay, Dick? Are you opposed to the resolution?
No, I'm good.
He's good.
Okay, sorry, I just need, I'll make sure I delay more on the votes. Sorry, just to clarify. All right, Resolution 2021-01 is approved. Thank you, council. Okay, next up is Ordinance 2021-01. Sorry, harder to say. Council to consider a vacation public right-of-way? And Ben?
All right, we'll run through this pretty quick. For those of you that recall the Cedar Ridge development proposed by Fisher Homes that came to you last year for the rezone approval, here's a couple of steps in the process we need to help clean up for them. Some of the existing edgewood is a little hard to see with the glare. So back in the 70s, the developer at the time for Edgewood had platted additional sections of edgewood that you see here represented by Section 2 for the farthest to north, Section 7, and Section 3 here to the farthest south. Those sections were never developed, never, any improvements were ever made to those areas, but there is still a plat on the books and right-of-way associated with that. So what's before you here tonight is a vacation request for the right-of-way associated with Section 2 and Sections 3. You probably can't see real well, but there is a couple of sections of right-of-way here that are associated with those sections that needs to be vacated in order to essentially set the stage for Fisher Homes to plat their own development in that area as they move forward. So this is essentially cleaning up that which was platted 50 years ago to set the stage for the new development to come in. So the request before you here tonight, the ordinance is to vacate those right-of-ways that are listed on there in Section 2 and Section 3, and then move forward with their development.
And so then, just to clarify, too, so the right-of-way where they are planning to build is different than what's being, what it is currently, right?
Yes, yeah, the alignments that they have proposed in their development are slightly different than what was proposed originally in the 70s. So thus, we're essentially just kind of erasing all the lines off here so we can start over with the new development.
And then at the end of this development, when it's, when they've finished, they will rededicate the right-of-way back to us with where it currently is. So it's kind of a temporary giveaway, but then it's given back to us when they complete.
Yes.
Rob, I'll have you read it, and then we'll see if there's any questions.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Ordinance 2021-01, where as it's the duty and responsibility of this council to maintain public right-of-ways for the benefit of the citizens of the city and to vacate those longer needed for the benefit of the public. It has been filed before the Lebanon Plan Commission, a petition docket 21-3, to vacate public right-of-ways in undeveloped Edgewood subdivision Sections 2, 3, and 7, as described in Exhibits A and B. The Plan Commission voted nine to zero to send a favorable recommendation to this council for consideration. Therefore, pursuant to Indiana Code, the city has the authority to vacate public rights away. Now finds that the public right-of-ways identified in Exhibits A and B that are attached here to are no longer needed for the benefit of the public. After a duly advertised and published public hearing pursuant to Indiana law, this council finds it proper and necessary to vacate the public rights away in Exhibits A and B. The conveyance of the real estate shall be to John and Amanda Artman, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect within Indiana law after any applicable waiting periods.
Thank you, Rob. And just to clarify, so Artman is the current owner of the rest of the property, and then once that's transferred, they'll then transfer that to Fisher, correct?
Yes, yeah, it was cleaner to go ahead and get the vacations done now. It'll revert back to the Artmans that currently own the property. And then when Fisher Homes purchase it from the Artmans, then this will just all be included.
Fair enough. Any questions from council concerning that?
No, sir.
Okay. Any public comment at this time? Okay. Ordinance 2021-01 has been read on our first reading, so we'll take that up at our next council meeting as well. And Ben, still your show. Ordinance 2021-02, council to consider a rezone of 845 Indianapolis Avenue.
All right, let's do the overhead again. This is a piece of property, 845 Indianapolis Avenue, it's right at the intersection with Spencer Avenue, so where State Road 32 comes in. There's an existing industrial building there. And again, you see kind of there's the larger industrial building back behind it. The petitioner has filed a request to rezone this property from the current zoning, which is General Industrial, an ID zoning district, to planned business commercial zoning classification. This rezone request is supported by the Comprehensive Plan for this area. Currently, there is not a development proposed, but they are marketing it for commercial development. Now, they have some potential interests, but nothing that's far enough along to necessarily show a concept here. But, so they are essentially, as the current owner, getting the process started for the rezone in terms of marketing to potential developers for commercial zoning. So as I mentioned, this is supported by the Comprehensive Plan. It did go for the Lebanon Plan Commission, they're meeting on January 26, and they do send it to you nine to zero with a favorable recommendation for the rezoning of the property from General Industrial to planned business commercial. And you can kind of see here the outlines reasonably well, even with the glare that's on there. This would be the, it's about .8 acres, I believe, is the total acreage, .84 acres that you would see here that's part of the request for the rezone. If you have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ben concerning this?
What's currently on there, on that property?
The petitioner's here, he may be able to answer you what's currently being used. That's, that's the property where you see the two colorful giraffes out front?
Oh, okay.
That's how, that's how I identify the property.
I could tell by the print what it was, okay.
Chuck, do you want to say anything, or?
Do I have any questions?
Any questions for the property owner at the moment?
No.
Nope? Thanks for coming. Okay, Rob, let's have that ordinance read then.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2021-02, again concerns the rezoning of the property and amending the zoning map of the City of Lebanon. Petitioner and owner Chuck Hunt filed his application for rezon before the City of Lebanon Plan Commission seeking to rezon approximately .84 acres. All of this described in Exhibits A and B, from General Industrial to Planned Business Commercial. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the City of Lebanon Plan Commission conducted its public hearing on January 26, 21, and voted nine to zero to send a favorable recommendation for this rezon to this council. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council, having considered the application and the recommendation of the City of Lebanon Plan Commission, now adopts the proposal and approves the requested zoning. Again, petitioner Chuck Hunt is the owner of the property. It comprises .84 acres. It's located at 845 Indianapolis Avenue, Lebanon, Indiana. It's more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. It is rezoned General Industrial. Council has paid reasonable regard to the applicable Comprehensive Plans, the current conditions, and the character of current structures and uses in each district. The conservation of the property values throughout the jurisdiction and the responsible development and growth and from and after this date, the official zoning map of the City of Lebanon shall be changed, again, from General Industrial to Planned Business Commercial.
Okay, thank you, Rob. That ordinance has been read on first reading, and we'll again take that up at our next meeting. Any final comments or thoughts from the council?
I have one question.
Go ahead, Keith.
Mr. Hunt, I have a question for you. How long, I mean, you anticipate being able to sell this fairly quickly?
Twice.
Okay.
At present time, we've got an accepted offer, a down payment. In the meantime, it's been reached out, and they basically want to take the whole building down and build a new structure. Second one wants to keep it as intact as it is and do some major upgrades. But there's considerable gap in money between the two.
Yeah, I just didn't, I know in other times, they get sold and it sits there for three or four years.
I can't hear you, Mr. Hunt.
I said, sometimes it gets sold and it's sit there for two or three, four years, more than what you're selling it. But if you're going to sell it quick, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're looking at, they're wanting to close right away and start construction in spring.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Hunt?
I have, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chuck. Thanks for coming. Again, we'll take that up at our next meeting for second reading. Okay, next item up is a presentation from Dave Newell from our new street department, or proposed street department facility. I'll let, let Joe get it all hooked up for him.
How's everybody doing tonight? Uh, we've been, sorry, let Joe get this hooked up here. I guess it's going to come up on the screen here. Maybe. Maybe, just a second. There we go. Thanks, Joe. Sorry about that. Thought, Joe, you wouldn't get this, so, you would, but it'd be more paper. Uh, we've been working on a, possibly for a while now, looking at putting a new facility in. Uh, we looked where we're at, and obviously, we're too small where we're at for the future. We just couldn't fit what we were looking for. So we're just going to give you guys a rundown of what we came up with, with the help of a lot of people. Turn on Joe's thing here again. This is, up in the top left's our existing facility. The, down the bottom left is the new facility, the outside, and then you got the plan and stuff. But you'll see a better detail of that as we go through here. This is our address now, 1301 Loffit Avenue. Did some research with the help of Steve Day and them, found out it was built in 1967. They moved in in 1968. It's Triangle Asphalt. It was his dad, Jack Day, and there was Don, and I know Dick probably knows another guy that was involved in the Triangle Asphalt business till.
Stewart, Junior Stewart, I think, Danny Sanders.
I think it was Don, Stewart, and somebody else. But anyway, they took it over, or they, somehow he ended up with the whole business. But anyway, the street department moved in there in 1984 from, our location was down by the Old Prairie Industries, I guess. So this is our second facility ever that we, I guess, to my knowledge, that the street department's ever been in. Some of the, we got now, we got offices and garage, stories, recycling, all in our facility. A lot of outdoor parking where we're at now. You know, we've just outgrown where we're at over the, over the years. So that's what we're looking at, where we're at now. Let me get this to go to the next one. There we go. Current conditions, it's kind of like we talked about, we're dated and outgrowing our space. Everything sits outside. Right now, you could go to our shop, and we have three plow trucks outside. We're able to put some other stuff out from our underhang sheds outside so that we can fit, they're backed in at least. But luckily, they're all three gas, because the rest of our diesel won't have to be inside, or we'd have to plug them in. We're just kind of, since the eighties, you know, equipment's gotten bigger, so we've outgrown our equipment. I mean, that's, we got not this back garage, but our other back garage, we can't even park stuff in it. Nothing fits, except our rollers and lawn mowers and stuff. Uh, we don't have enough storage for everything. You kind of see on this picture on the left, some of our trucks, they just sit outside. Uh, so, you know, with our new fleet and stuff, we'd like to have everything under one roof for safety, or for security reasons as well, you know? Uh, there's a lot of drainage issues where we're at, just from the years of being there. If it's raining and stuff, water comes in under the walls in the shop. Not so much in offices, thank goodness. Has to really rain hard for it to come in there, but. This is a picture of the new facility that they gave us, the design and what it would look like. The only thing that's going to change, you'll see in the other pictures, is this was the very first of it, with the pond running and the drives and stuff, we moved this drive to the other side, and the lot's kind of on the other side of the building instead of this side. But it's a nice-looking facility, so it, you know, we've met up. Tried to meet everything that the city asked for, so we wouldn't want our own variances. We wouldn't go against our own, you know, our own policies, so we're trying to match all those. Uh, this gives you a look of where we'd be at. There's the Gene Haas facility, we're right behind it. It's a city-owned property already, so, you know, that saved money for the city. Now, we doubled in size. We're on three acres now, and that's six acres. Now, granted, a lot of that'll be taken up with the, the building and the drainage pond we have to add for the, but, but it's a lot. You know, we can, future expansion and everything, and you'll see there. Uh, the projected project's at 4.26 million total project, so that's the number we have. It's, uh, we go to the business park first anyway, so we're kind of out there with them as far as plowing season, stuff like that. We'll be a lot more friendly neighbors, you know? The other night, we were out at 2:30 in the morning, we had some lights coming on in neighborhoods, and they understand. You know, we've never had anybody call in and complain, but it, I'm sure it's, it's kind of a pain. We try to be good neighbors, but we were there first kind of thing, but still, you know, we're just kind of in a residential area right now with all of our buzzers, you know, everything you got to have on the vehicles now and the equipment. The construction dates are given us are looking to begin at spring of 2021, would be completed at spring of 2022. So that gives you an idea of that. I know I'm kind of flying through this, if you have any questions, we can go through them. Definitely give us a lot of improved working conditions. Uh, in the offices alone, we'd have a lot more office space. We'd have, you know, a training room or a conference room, and we'd have an actual break room instead of an office that was converted into a break room, stuff like that. Showers that we don't have now, just a lot of amenities that we don't have at our facility. Lockers, handicap accessible, I mean, there's a lot going into it, I guess. Definitely upgrade our salt barn. I think right now, we can hold, I'm guessing off the top of my head, like 400, 300 to 400 ton of salt is all we can hold. We're, we can get 800 ton plus 100 over that with our state bid. And some of the problems we run into with that is, right now, we're almost out of material. Everybody is ordering material for the year, because everybody's had snow, so we're kind of chomping at the bit to get material. So with the new salt barn, it'd be a 1,200 ton facility, which is way more than we need, but we look for the future. So we wouldn't have to come in and build again a salt barn. And we could, in the summertime, get our 800 ton plus more, and then we're stocked up for the, we wouldn't have no worries in the winter. We're already stocked up, and in the next summer, we stock up for the next season, next budget cycle. So that was the plan behind the salt barn. Plus, we put our, on the backside of the salt barn, it's just one building with two, or not even a building, it's canopy-type deal with two open ends. The other end is going to have your, our stone, sand, coal mix. Everything will be right there, and won't be spread all over the lot. Everything will be contained under one roof. Uh, definitely an improvement in our recycling area. A lot of potholes and stuff where we're at, we just, I mean, we maintain it, but it'd just be a lot cleaner, be a lot more user-friendly for the public, so we took that in consideration. You know, we want to keep it at our facility, so we want to make it a lot more user-friendly if we're building something new. Definitely increased, everything would be inside, all our equipment, from our leaf machines to our, to the pickups, they're going to be in, inside this facility. Nothing's outside. So that would definitely be an improvement for us, if I can get this to work again. Uh, this is kind of a layout of the, how the property would look. It's kind of, I think another one shows the actual drive-out, but it goes and matches up on Mount Zion with the hotel across the street. And then we come down and catch this access road, just the corner of it, for Stuart Haas Center. Uh, the, the yellow areas for future expansion of the building, and the blues are fenced-in area. The, you got the office in the front, and then the, a square foot of our office and garage together, I guess, at 22,000. But then you got the salt barn behind it. That little dot they point to is our fuel tank, that's where our fuel would be. Uh, to your right, you got the recycling and then the dumpsters we use. I don't know if you can tell here, there's a gate on the recycling for the public, we open every morning like we do now. And then there's a gate on the building that would be an electronic gate, so the public can't come back and, you know, get hit by equipment, or we don't know they're back there, or any of that stuff. It only opens. We, we've locked our gate for a while now, where we just have to use a car to get in, or we're having people coming through. It's kind of a problem we have now, is with our recycling now, if you've ever been there, we have to park trucks to keep people from either driving through, or they'll drive through, and then they can't figure out how to get out. Or they'll, we've come out in the shop, and there's people in the shop looking at shovels, and we're like, hello, and they're like, well, we bought these. It's like, yeah, that's not really how it works, you know? So we've had that before, very few and far between, but. This is the 30 bays, I think, I believe it is, we have. So like I said, everything can come in, park inside, we got storage in there. We've tried to put every so many bay, it's one, two, three, four, like five or six on each side of the bays. We have air, air access and water access. You know, we can hook a hose or an airline to it. Not to say we have to leave six lines there, but we can move our lines around. That way, if a truck needs cleaned off, or tires aired up, or something, or blowed off, we can, we don't have to have a 900-foot hose or move the truck clear down there. Each truck would kind of have its own area where, you know, we try to plan ahead for like, if that bay one's a plow truck, it's plows there, everything's there. That's that truck's home, per se. You know, and if we come in one morning and something's missing, it's like, okay, wait a minute, you know, where's that truck? Or where's this piece of equipment? We'd know right away. Now, I could, something came missing from the back, I don't, it might take us a little bit to realize something's gone, unfortunately, but. Uh, two, we, we try to really limit the overhead doors. We've ran into, noticed that those are a problem. Air problem, you know, you get a lot of cold air, plus the maintenance, so we put a door on each end. So you drive through one end, go out the other, or vice versa, and you're very limited maintenance-wise, trying to keep the maintenance down on the facility. It shows the, that'd be the parking out front, that would be our customer parking plus the employee parking. So there'd be no employee cars past the fences. That way, we, you know, got plenty of room to move our equipment around. So that's the idea, that, you know, everybody just comes through the building and comes in. This is the actual office space, it kind of, you can see the, the main door there, that's a big plus for us, something we really focused on. Right now, if somebody comes in, which we're closed to the public now, but if somebody comes in now, Lana's office is right there, and her only door to get out of that office is right there. So if we had an angry individual, which we've never had, don't ever plan on having, but she's trapped. I mean, that's, so we try to weigh our safety options for her and our people. So they come through that door, it's going to have the push-button handicap and all that. It'll, it'll ding the rest of the office, and basically, they can't get no further than that unless we let them further than that. So, and kind of some things, we kind of looked at at the police station, and we went up here and talked to them, and nobody can go any further than that main entrance, so that's kind of what we wanted, just for safety reasons. Obviously, we added a conference room, so we, we do a lot of training in the wintertime, and go in there and make our plans for the day. Now, we just have to sit in the break room slash training room slash everything, but, you know, we make it work. But if we're going to build something, we wanted to have a facility where we could invite other departments to train with us. And, you know, IT's been in there talking to us of what we could do. You know, put a TV or a screen in there to use for our training slideshow, stuff like that. Added, we got three offices now, I think Craig and Tom, my foreman, share an office, so. And this would give us six, just the way the building lined out. We don't necessarily need six at this point, but we could in the future, and it's there if we need it, you know? Uh, the bathrooms, like I said, it gives them lockers and showers in both the women's and men's bathroom. Now, if we ever get any female employees with us, we'll land us one, but if we got some that worked with us too, you know, we're not saying that can't be an option, so we're giving them the entities we give for the guys. Then we got an extra family bathroom, you know, so we can offer the public a restroom, since it's a public building. See, we, obviously, IT room, stuff like that. We got our break room, which will have an actual sink in it and refrigerator and microwave stuff. The guys can eat lunch there if we're plowing all night, or if they just want to eat lunch there, it's totally up to them. We got a little storage room that we've made a double door there, so we could put our skids in, with our pallet jacks, so it stores signs, all that, get it out of the middle of the shop, you know, we can get it in that room. Just utilize our space. There's a sink in there, I believe, if the guys want to clean up, versus happen to come clear up in the office. We did ask to add a generator, because we've ran into just a little backup generator that runs just at least like the gate and the doors, a couple of lights. Because we've had a couple storms where we went into our shop, trying to react, and no power. So it kind of throws a kink in things, you know, trying to get a big bay door up is kind of a beast when there ain't no power. So we ran into that, learned our lesson, be like, okay, let's throw a little generator in there that could at least get the doors open, get us out and about, to help our community as much as we can, as quick as we can, and as safely as we can, I guess, in that matter. But it's just, I mean, all in all, that's the gist of it, I think. Let me make sure there ain't, there's one more, but I think it's just to wrap up. But yeah, I mean, just try to look to where we wouldn't get in a facility, and next year, or two years down the road, we'll be coming here and saying, hey, thanks for letting us do that, but we're about grown where we're at. You know, we wanted to think ahead, have room to plan ahead, and just, you know, give us just what we need really to work, honestly. We're not asking for no more. We've tried to minimize it as much as we can to, to work and still have a little bit of room to grow without having to grow a little bit, and then be where we need to expand, kind of deal. We are going to have the pond built out to like we're fully expanded. That way, we don't ever have to go back and touch the drainage or nothing like that. But that's all I got.
Any questions for Dave? Kevin is here as well too, if you want to, if there are any financial questions. Dave's kind of.
Hey, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Dick.
Uh, I just, I could just barely hear Dave's presentation, but I heard it earlier. And I just texted Dave about six questions that I had concerns about. I don't know if he can get those off his phone or not, and ask those, and kind of answer those for the board.
I can't, I'll have to grab my phone here.
Yeah, we can, you want to ask questions tonight, or you want to ask them later, Dick?
Uh, no, I can, you can ask him tonight if he's got his phone available. I just got to ask some questions. I just got to ask some questions.
Well, I can, I can sort of hear you, I can relay it if you want to say what your question is.
Well, my first question was, where is the recycling area going to be on the map and the layout of the facility?
Let me get back to that real quick.
Yeah, we can pull that up here, Dick, on the presentation, if you can see the screen, if we can pull the...
It's right out, I mean, I don't have really nothing to point at.
So, so Dick, I think you said you couldn't hear Dave, so it's the, it's the area that's just outside of the, it's those four kind of square or rectangles, just outside of the fence, on the right side of the, of the, of the map, if you can see that.
Right there.
Okay.
Zoomed in on it.
Okay. My other question is, is there going to be a firewall of some kind between the garage and the office space?
Yes, what they call...
Yes, there'd be a firewall between the office and the garage.
It's a seven, like what...
Okay, my other question is, and I think, I think I got an idea where these are at. I was questioning on where, where is the storage for small equipment and hand tools? Where is that inside the garage area?
I'd have to go back to that one, but it's, it's at the, wow, maybe I went too far. Here it is.
Go one, go one more, Dave. Or is it in this one?
It's in the garage, right there. We've got a storage area there, and then it's connected to the office right up there, where the double doors are.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay.
Yeah. That's why we put the double doors, so we could get our pallet jacks and get in and out of there with tools.
Do you have, my other question, Dave, was, will there be a garage floor drain running clear across the drive, the garage inside?
Yes, there will be.
Yeah, it goes down the middle, Dick, of the whole shop, because they knew we had plow equipment to be sitting in there draining off, and there's a grease oil-water separator outside there too, to separate it before it goes to the sanitary.
So there's a...
Is that located, that's located outside?
Yes, the separator is, yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Where's the wash bay, do you have the wash bay set up in there?
No, we're...
Is it gonna be on one end of garage or something, or...
Well, the way it's designed, we could wash it out right there in the, in the bay, because the drains are in the middle of the shop.
And then they have the hookups along the wall for the water and air both, so they were able to just kind of wash the trucks in their own spa.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. Okay, I'll probably have something else, and I'll just stop by and see David at the office.
Yep, that'd probably be, that'd be good. All right.
Cool.
Kevin, do you want to briefly touch on financial? I know we're in still in early discussions with Umba on that, but I know we've kind of got a little bit of a roadmap on what we're thinking.
Yeah, we are in the preliminary phases. We're meeting later this week to discuss the funding options. Right now, it looks like the most promising funding option that Umba has put forth, or excuse me, Baker Tilly has put forth, is looking at the stormwater department revenue stream as a financial backup to a bond that would pay for this facility. Actually, we're looking at this as, as well as a road project for the Ford Ice Road project, which is primarily a drainage improvement project that would be using the stormwater department revenue stream as a, as a backup for, for bonding.
So essentially, the stormwater utility would be, does it pay for this building?
Exactly. The stormwater utility that collects fees from every resident business owner in the city, based off of the amount of stormwater that their properties generate, is a utility fee, just like you pay for water, sewer. And those fees then create a revenue stream through the stormwater utility that can be used to, to bond the projects.
Okay.
Mayor, what's, what's our, or Ben or Kevin want, what is our outside storage regulations in that area where we're at? We okay to put a fence, a, a little fences up, the blocks to see through, or something, so people can't see what we have? We able to do that there?
We have already taken this through, through the BZA for a couple of variances. Ben could probably speak to them more specifically, but essentially, we've designed a project that we feel meets the, the intent of the UDO in the, in the business park. There are several common variances that most industrial buildings in the business park receive, and we didn't want to go above and beyond anything that's normally issued for other, other projects. So, we did get a couple of variances that, you know, if you want to get into the details of those, perhaps Ben could, can remind us of what those were.
My only other comment is, I would recommend that we had more windows or something on the, on the sides of the garage, beside the garage door or whatever, but at least more windows that we could take in some more natural light, and that would save on lighting and stuff like that.
Yeah, we put a lot of windows in it, but we also put in a, the, what do you want to call it, energy efficient lighting and stuff in it as well. They're solar windows, I believe, is what we looked at, so. But yeah, every, it's kind of a prefab building, so it's kind of what we got, is my understanding on the windows and stuff.
Any other questions from council?
No, sir.
Okay.
What's the square footage of the large building? I see the foot, but I'm just...
It's, I can't, it was...
The total's twenty-two thousand.
It was like eighteen thousand by itself, wasn't it? Because they had the two combined on our slide presentation, but...
It doesn't make it, I just wanted to know what it was.
I want to say it's approximately twenty thousand square feet, but I couldn't remember.
Well, that's with the office, right?
That is the office.
So I think it's eight, I think the office is four thousand square feet, and the other one was sixteen, seventeen, yeah, something like that.
And currently, if you was to put everything you have in that large building right now, how many empty spaces do you have?
Oh, we might have two, probably, two to three empty places. But if the worst, I guess, case scenario is if we grow bigger than we think now, and we, I don't, it didn't show on there, but we have an alternative bid to add a few more spaces, because I guess costs were down lower than we thought at the time, so. But we would have about three bays. We really banged our heads trying to think of what we could possibly need that would outgrow us, and there's, I mean, we, everything we got, we just got a new street sweeper a couple of years ago, so we don't foresee any type of, anything that would push us out of that building, as far as filling it up.
Yeah, so we're, I mean, we're...
Again, I'm not familiar with how this is done, but just give me an idea, how do you calculate how many pieces of equipment you need?
I, I physically walked a lot and counted every piece of equipment we have. So some of these bays are kind of oversized for what we got, you know, we got push or walk behind mowers or seventy-inch mowers, so we could fit a lot of those in one bay. I counted maybe two bays for all that, so it wouldn't really like, I just walked it, I maybe we did some tape measuring on trucks, how wide they are, how long they are, how long our longest truck is with a plow on it, how wide they are, so we could have room move around, and that's how we came up with the bay sizes and what kind of space we'd need.
I think maybe too, I, I guess what I'm assuming from the line of question is, are we building enough capacity? Is the building really big enough?
Yes, I'm wanting to know that. That's a good question I should have asked, but that's where I'm going, yes.
Well, and here's what I would, I would offer. One, we, we sized the building, so yes, Dave can put all of his equipment in that building, lock it all up, it's safe, it's secure, it's out of the weather. In wintertime, you can jump in the building, ready to go, you're not worried about the cold weather affecting the ability to start up equipment. And it's, it's also not just trucks, but it's mowing equipment, it's trailers, it's vacuum equipment, it's, everything would have a parking space in the building, there's two or three miscellaneous spaces that would be left for growth. You might say to yourself, well, is that really enough if you're just building it slightly bigger than the capacity today? But what I would tell you is, today, you can't park more than, what, four trucks inside your building?
Right now, we have two, four, six trucks.
Six trucks? All the other trucks, all the other pieces of equipment primarily are sitting outside in the weather. So we would still have room to set stuff outside and grow, but this, this building's essentially given the ability to put everything under roof. Could it be bigger? You know, really, we started this process sort of iteratively, looking at what do we need today, what is your wildest dream in terms of how many pieces of equipment you would have as we look to grow? And, and we ended up settling on this primarily just due to budget constraints and what we feel, feel we can realistically bond with the revenue streams that are available to us.
Yeah. But, I mean, but we've got essentially the equipment we need, right? So the only new equipment we would need would maybe some additional trucks, but that would come with an employee that as we deem they're needed, right? So, it would, I mean, because they're not on the same, they all, they use different equipment based on what they're doing that day, right? So not every piece is used every day. So, in order for us to fill up all those spots, we'd have to add quite a few...
We'd have to add about two or three trucks.
Yeah, we have to add more employees, which, we're at a good point now, so...
I just want it done right, I don't want it, you know, like I say, and I know you're doing, I'm not questioning your work, I just don't know what the formulas are for how many you need, but I know that you guys do, so it's good.
I will say, that's what we sat down and made sure that we didn't build something, we didn't want to have something to show everybody, and then two years later, be like, well, everything's outside, because we outgrew it. So we tried to, obviously, we can't, but we can kind of follow trends and guess, you know, kind of how we're growing, but that was the idea, was to at least go quite a few years before we had to worry about the expansion.
I also know that buildings are non-functional because of clutter, so I don't want you to have so much that you can't, you know, got to move like musical chairs, you know, that's also inconvenient for you guys, so I just want to make sure that you've got your space.
Yeah, yeah, that we, that's what we tried to account for, everything that we could.
Any other questions for council?
Hey, Dave, you think this will have better heating and cooling than what you have now?
Yes, sir. We can, we take our, it's kind of a joke with us, but Lana's always got a sweater or jacket on, and her, the main foyer is like seventy-two, and then you go in the offices and it's like sixty, so. And the break room's sometimes colder than that, there's just, for some reason, it's just old and done. But yeah, we'd definitely be able to, you know, be able to stay warm, I mean, we stay warm now, but it would be a lot more efficient for us.
Well, I would say, I think the old building has served us well, but, you know, fifty-four year tour is for a, it's been a long time for a facility, so...
Well, I know there's a few people that I think worked in that old building. Dick was one of them, and I think you was one of them, so...
Okay. With that, again, there's no action tonight, this is just a presentation for your information. We'll have, you know, as the financial things start progressing, we did authorize to seek bids at the Board of Works tonight, so we'll get a better financial picture in the coming, coming, coming weeks, so. All right, next, yep, thank you, Dave. Next up is Resolution 2021-02. This is for Tanya, this is transferring funds from General Fund to Rainy Day.
This is a resolution transferring funds from the City General to Rainy Day. Common Council for the City of Lebanon is vested with the authority and obligation to allocate certain appropriations and expenditures to transfer money to provide the best interest of the city. The council previously established a Rainy Day Fund. The council may transfer unused, unencumbered funds to a Rainy Day Fund by resolution. We're looking to transfer eight hundred thousand from City General Fund to the Rainy Day Fund. The amount to be transferred is less than ten percent of the city's annual budget and is not being transferred to funded debt service. Be it resolved and adopted by the Council of City of Lebanon, that the following amount be transferred from Fund 101 to Fund 270. Additionally, the Lebanon Clerk Treasurer is authorized to transfer said funds and take such actions necessary to complete this resolution. That's all.
Tony, you just want to talk about how we just normally do this? This is a...
Yeah, we, we do this about every other year, and, and we used to use the funds from the Rainy Day. We've sort of put that on hold the last couple of years, so we have, you know, a good balance there. And basically, these funds can be used almost just like the General Fund, we would just transfer it back to General Fund if we came to that purpose that we needed to use Rainy Day money. So, it's, it's basically a savings account, so...
And what's, how much are we transferring, and then what's the current amount?
Uh, we're transferring eight hundred thousand, and that'll bring us to about two-point-seven million in Rainy Day.
Okay. Any questions concerning Resolution 2021-02? Okay. Would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2021-02.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution 2021-02 of eight hundred thousand from the City Fund to the Rainy Day Fund.
We have motion to approve, second, second? Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That resolution is adopted. Thank you, council. All right, last but not least, item F, Resolution 2021-03, City Council to authorize exchange of city property at 115 South Meridian Street for exchange property at 113 East Main Street.
Good evening, council. I will give you the quick scenario here, and if you have any questions, certainly ask. This is a step in the process for the redevelopment commission to be, have the ability to purchase 115 South Meridian Street. So back this summer, we were able to negotiate the purchase of the old Montgomery Ward site, 125 South Meridian Street. And at that time, they asked me to try to come up, come to an agreement with the property owner, that was the parking lot to the north, so we could have the entire quarter block there. Long story short, round one of negotiations did not go very well, so we kind of left it alone for a while, let it simmer, revisited those negotiations this December, and the deal was able to get done. So with this deal, we are swapping parking lots and cash in lieu of the difference between the two values. So 113 East Main Street is a parking lot currently owned by the City of Lebanon, where the former, well, actually, the first city building sat once upon a time, first and second. And we are taking that property, transferring it over to the RDC so that they can make the land swap with the property owner at 115 South Meridian Street. We are exchanging, again, the two pieces of property and cash to make this deal happen, so with that, it's kind of the quick and dirty, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, just to clarify too, so what we foresee doing with this, the, the old Montgomery Ward building site, as well as this new parking, or the swapped parking lot are now, would now be one piece, right, that we would then resurface and re-stripe for just general public parking in the downtown area. In the meantime, while it's serving as parking, we would send out requests for proposals for redevelopment of that site. Obviously, it's in our control, we can determine what best, what project best fits there for us long-term, but in the meantime, again, it's serving as parking. So we see it's kind of maybe as a middle-term solution to, to kind of increase some parking downtown, but then also, one day, redevelop that site and put it back kind of on the tax rolls, so to speak. And this kind of helps us, because of the, of the owner of the lot, also owns a building or owns a business downtown, he needed some parking, so allowing us to kind of do a property swap helps us with that, because he obviously needs some parking with it, but doesn't need as, maybe as much as he currently has. So that's why he's able to kind of part with it. And I think if we, you know, we wanted to do it now, because we feel like down the road, if we do get a proposal for redevelopment, we don't own the full site, it could become challenging of what the purchase price is, because the, the other developer, whoever wants to buy it, may not own a parking lot to swap, so to speak, right? So it kind of allows us to kind of set the stage, and, and kind of, everybody kind of gets what they want, so to speak, and allows us most maximum flexibility down the road, is kind of the concept behind it, so.
No, it was very quick, I appreciate, you know, we gave a much longer presentation to the Board of Works, but is there any, so tonight, we're just essentially authorizing the RDC to move forward with the, with the property swap. So are there any questions for Derek or me about this issue?
I, I guess I had a quick question. You said we're swapping the properties plus some funds.
Yeah, so the, so the lot adjacent to the Montgomery Ward site is bigger, right? So it has a, it's a higher value, and then, and we're doing some minor things like the, we're resurfacing it before we trade it over, things like that. So it, it doesn't, the property would not agree at the appraised price, so it's slightly above what the appraised price of the, of the, of the, of the, of the lot, but it's a, it's a negotiated price, I think we feel comfortable with, that we think it's a fair price. It's honestly the best we, we could, we could do to negotiate with it. And Derek, can I, if you want to touch on any of that, but...
Sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, 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 there's a difference of value, because the, the lot that we're, I mean, I think it's, how many spots are in the new lot?
Twenty-seven versus sixteen.
27 versus 16, um, is this, is the size difference. Uh, parking lots are difficult to put a value on, um, when you look at them in parking lots alone, uh, the current owner of 115 South Meridian Street, it is an incoming, income-producing piece of, of ground, he does lease, uh, 18 of the 27 spots, uh, for an annual fee, so, um, he uses seven of them for his own, uh, employees, gives them two there for wiggle room for, uh, customers and, uh, that come and visit his business. Um, but, you know, with him having income produced off of that lot, it gave him, uh, a sense that his lot was worth more than what the appraised value, um, and I don't necessarily disagree with that. Um, so, uh, we were able to get to sort of a, not exactly what he wanted, not exactly what we wanted to give, but right out of middle ground. Um, and as the mayor alluded to, um, you know, we kind of came to the, the thought that if we don't do this now, um, we have a smaller parcel to offer, and if the builder or developer goes to the private owner of the lot, uh, the price would likely increase, because he's, again, as the mayor said, losing his ability to have some income-producing spaces of a lot that he owns, and he loses all of his parking for his employees as well, so, um, it'd be a bigger loss for him without a parking lot, which we have and we can offer, um, and gives it a much better, uh, value when we start putting out the RFPs for redevelopment. It takes it from a 60 by 120 lot to roughly a 120 by 120 lot, so, uh, the opportunities are much better for, for the city.
So, the, as I, as I do the math, so the bottom line is, we're swapping parking lots, giving the, the other person, uh, $75,000 plus resurfacing the lot?
It is, uh, yes, our, our property is valued at 50,000, which we are giving him, um, and we are giving him $75,000 in cash and roughly a $9,000 resurface of the lot that we're giving him.
And then we're going to recoup that money when we sell that property, if we do sell it?
Uh, yeah, potentially, uh, depending on how we use it as an incentive for the development, whatever the case may be, uh, but it definitely puts us in the driver's seat, uh, when it comes time for redevelopment.
Thank you.
It, it also allows us to be more efficient with the parking lot when we re-stripe it for public parking, so we can, we can get more lot, more parking spots in there by having the two lots together, versus if they were separated, right, we'd be more efficient from a layout standpoint as well, too.
Yeah, we would have had to delineate who's is private, who's is public, um, it would have, as the mayor said, reduced the spots. We'll, we'll likely get somewhere in the upper 40 range on, on, uh, parking spots available, free parking spots.
And those will not-
Certainly increase from 16.
And, and those will not be to our restrictive either, so those will just be open for anybody who wants to park downtown all day long, so.
Thank you.
But we all, we also, by doing that, we also have the ability to, um, solicit a larger development there because of the laws are combined, so we have a-
Absolutely.
We have a potential trade up, we don't trade down.
Correct, yeah, so we, it's kind of a long-term kind of thinking, because we, we could then, um, you can get a larger footprint building, which then would then have a higher assessed value, which would then pay more taxes.
Absolutely, yes.
Any other questions before I have Rob read the ordinance, or resolution, excuse me? Want to read that for me?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, Resolution 2021 dash 03, uh, again, authorizes the exchange of the property located at 113 East Main Street by the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission. The Lebanon Redevelopment Commission is authorized under Indiana law to administer certain redevelopment and economic development activities within the city. The Redevelopment Commission owns the real property located at 113 East Main Street as set forth in Exhibit A, that's described as the commission property. The city previously transferred to the Redevelopment Commission the property, uh, in order for the commission to hold and dispose of it in accordance with Indiana law. Subject to the approval of this council, the commission has the power, under Indiana law, to exchange the commission property, following certain procedures set forth in the act. The Redevelopment Commission has proposed exchanging the commission property, again, as Mr. Warren indicated, for the real property located at 115 South Meridian Street, and again, that's set forth in this resolution, and described as the exchange property. The commission has provided this council with all the information supporting the exchange, therefore be it resolved, that these recitals are incorporated into this resolution, and this council has reviewed the materials and information presented by the commission and approves the exchange in accordance with Indiana code, and this resolution shall be in full force and effect immediately upon its adoption.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Any questions, Mr. Council, now that it has been read?
No, sir.
Any public comment? Okay. Would entertain a motion concerning Resolution 2021 dash 03.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution 2021 dash 03.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Resolution 2021 dash 03 has been adopted unanimously, thank you, council. Okay, that concludes what I have for new business, is there anything from council? Nope? Okay, then move, move on to claims or entertain a motion?
Move to approve the claims.
We have a motion to approve the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Claims are approved. Any announcements or discussion?
No, sir.
And, and then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion be adjourned.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.